Like to call this evening's Hanover Borough Council meeting to order. Please.
Just roll with it.
Okay. Please stand, remove your hats, and join me to give a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. An executive session was held prior to this meeting from 6:00 PM to 6:52 to meet with council and the solicitor regarding a conditional use request for Buck Stuckey at 223 Carlisle Street under Section 708A 5 of the Sunshine Act, and also to discuss a matter involving a prospective borough employee under Section 708A 1. Thank you, sir. Before we have our public comment, we'd ask that everyone that's intending to make a comment this evening in the public comments section to have signed in with the register at the door, where you put your name and address and so forth on the list. We're also requesting that all citizens wishing to speak, please sign in, as I mentioned, at the agenda table at the meeting, at the beginning of all the meetings. Please be able to summarize your concern, question, or comment, and structure it to within about three minutes to allow adequate time and consideration for all comments to be heard from our meeting participants. With that, I will, I'm going to get the sheet. I will ask for public comment for those that are here in the room, after which we will go to the, our digital participants.
Good evening, Mark Becker, 529 Carlisle Street, Hanover. Again, as you know, I represent numerous property owners in the borough, both landlords and tenants. We're back here tonight to discuss the structure of the landlord-tenant workshop. This is listed under Item 9B on the agenda as the rental registration and inspection workshop. My first question that I think we should all be asking ourselves tonight is why are we here? Why do we keep coming back and revisiting this issue again and again? You might recall that on November 22nd, 2022, Councilman Hegberg made a motion to adopt the rental unit registration inspection ordinance. No one else would second the motion. The silence was deafening. What does that mean? It means that council doesn't want this ordinance. The people who live in the borough of Hanover don't want this ordinance. But here we are, two months later, talking about a workshop to promote this ordinance. Why is that? How can one council person keep putting this issue back on the agenda again and again, and bringing it back, meeting after meeting, when the entire community and council are being held hostage over this ordinance? What are we even talking about? I was here for the last several meetings, I'm not even sure. Councilperson Funk raised an important issue. She said her biggest concern was the number of buildings in the Hanover Borough that are looking rundown. I think many of those in attendance agreed, and we all agree, that many of them are occupied by tenants. That is a problem. But it's not a problem that can be fixed by more government or the IPMC. Council President Ricard promised to have a public discussion about people's concerns, about potential solutions. And here we are, two months later, talking about a workshop that's not going to be public. And it will not include Mr. Chris Miller, the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. I think Mr. Miller is doing an excellent job. But the council person that's promoting this workshop apparently doesn't agree. Ironically, the only person who can really resolve this disagreement is Mr. Miller himself. But he will not be invited to this workshop. Does that make any sense to anyone? The meeting also is not going to be public, as promised. You'll have to be invited to participate. Who will be invited? We don't know. And to top it all off, I now saw on the agenda, under Councilperson Rupp's committee, that they want to put a three-minute time limit on the amount of time that anyone could speak. They want to buy a timing system. So they can make sure that whoever does get invited to this closed meeting doesn't speak for more than three minutes. I couldn't even have a conversation with Councilperson Funk in November to find out what her concerns were in three minutes. When I was here in November, we had a packed house. There was, every seat in the room just about was filled. I heard President Ricard compliment people for taking time out of their schedules, for being here, to attend the meeting. And I believe that what borough residents want is not to be silenced, they want to be heard. Councilperson Ricard never had to ask anyone to sit down because they were disrespectful. He never had to cut anyone off on a three-minute arbitrary, three-minute time limit. He never told anyone they were disrespectful. I never heard any council member say that. Silencing your critics or people that don't agree with you is not the answer. We need an open dialogue between council and the public that is respectful, spirited, informed, not secret meetings or three-minute time limits. That's not what Council Ricard promised us. And what about the individuals who are invited to participate in the meeting? Are they going to be allowed to talk about the solutions that we talked about in November? About the possibility of a borough buying a building and tearing it down, selling it to a developer to build a new house, like you did on Baltimore Street? Tax cuts for landlords that make improvements to their properties so their taxes don't go back up? Or will they be limited to discussing the ordinance that no one voted for except Councilman Hegberg? Can anyone even define the problem that the workshop is attempting to solve, or is that a secret too? I think this has gone too far. The workshop is no longer a public meeting to discuss solutions. It's an attempt to revive an ordinance that council and the people don't want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comment? Got Mr. Riston?
Sorry, I don't have a binder this time. I just have the 31 committee meetings that we've had on this topic over the last four years. Before I begin my public comment, I do want to correct the record real quick. Back in November, in the minutes, I mentioned that I talked about Glenville Borough, but it was Ray Glen Rock Borough. They've had a rental inspection for the last 20 years, and it was updated about in 2017 in October. So that's the community I was talking about when they're dealing with this situation. Because, you know, Glen Rock has a large population of their community is renter-based as well, so we're going to have comparison. Back in November, Councilman Rickert asked me what I wanted from an ordinance. And for me, looking over the 31 committee meetings that we've had on rental inspection and renter registration, it came very apparent that a lot of committee members, council members, are actually in support of it. But unfortunately, with the lack of showing from the public, it doesn't seem that way, and it kind of seems lopsided. So I have started to ask people to come to meetings. So if anyone is here at this meeting today that's in favor of rental inspection or renter registration ordinance, I ask them to stand up so council can see them, so they can be seen. And the reason I'm doing this is because you need to know that people are in your court, that people want this done in our community. And I want to go on to say that in, we already had a full committee meeting for public safety back in January 13th, 2020, that was fully focused on this topic, open to the public, open to comments, had an entire presentation by our fire chief on this, right? And it was a great meeting, right? And Councilmember Funk was also on there as well, being able to talk to the public. Additionally, as noted in the email for rental inspection on November 9th, 2021, the current ordinance itself fails for three reasons, right? No mechanism for verifying for a trigger of the data, for having a program that lacks structure, that suddenly collects data that is often unreliable, and three, because of administrational rate, it currently doesn't have a consistent history of citing property owners for failure to comply. So for those reasons, right, that was the task to update our ordinance, because the current one is lacking. And when council was presented options multiple times, may I have you? Council decided to go with the strongest option for safety reasons, and safety is important. I want to note back to November, or rather, February 5th, 2020, when the York Fire from 24th to 32nd on York Street. Fire Chief Clouger stated that the cause of the fire could have easily been identified in a routine fire inspection. Further, in 2018 and 2019, with over 90% of fire losses happening in rental properties. I want to reiterate why this is important, how you have the power as council, as determined under Section 3205-A in reserved powers. You have the ability to have inspectors go in the houses, is protected by the state. The one thing you need to caution about is the fee. The fee under the Commonwealth when Allentown was sued over their fee increase matters how that's determined. Thankfully, this ordinance doesn't state a fee. That can happen at a later date, which I imagine council will do. Furthermore, I don't believe a workshop is necessary because of how many meetings we've had and how great this ordinance is. If this ordinance was not great, you would hear it from me first, as a renter firsthand. I would not sugarcoat that. I would tell you this ordinance is bad, and we need to move on and have more meetings. But this one is a really well-done one. It only looks at making sure that property managers live in York. It only looks at making sure that rental registration is done, but cut up with every two years. Finally, though, if you want to go with a workshop, that is your prerogative. I ask you to have a deliverable by the summer, so that way you can vote either yes or no on it, to make sure that if a compromise can be made by renters and landlords, that the prior ordinance that's been worked on for the last two years is the base ground that that will be voted on. If a compromise cannot be structured. I have full faith that you as council members and my council member Funk, who has strongly talked about this in favor for the last three years, will get this done. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Riston.
Of course.
I have two other names here, Mr. Taylor. Please come forward.
Mark Taylor, 168 Second Avenue. Speaking of the February 5th, 2020 fire, hi, I was one of the people who lost his property and everything within that, during that fire. Not to mention, two days less than a year, February 3rd, 2021, I lived at, I lived at, sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking, I lived at 217 York Street. Once again, the building right behind me caught on fire, which could have been by preventable means. The only reason I was there at that time is because there was a brick wall because of the way the building was built over time. I still had massive smoke damage I had to do from, so within one year, two properties here that I lived in, rented, had fires. Both were very easily preventable if somebody had just inspected these properties. The first one, the wire was hanging between the buildings at some point where I've heard construction was done. They knocked the wire, never repaired it. The second one was faulty wiring in the flooring between the two units. So I really think that, yeah, we just need to inspect these places. There's so many places in this town that I've lived that have been death traps. I'm not even going to lie about it. I've lived at quite a few places, lived over by, I can't remember the address, but on Broadway, over by the Crab Shack, I lived in those rental units at one point. I've lived, I can't remember all the places, but every place I've lived that's been affordable for anybody has been not very well-kept by their landlords. And I think just, somebody needs to come and inspect them every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The last I have is, last name is Klein, I'm sorry. All right. Then I guess we'll go to our digital participants.
Those joining us online, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Well, I guess then, with that, we'll close the public comment for this section of the meeting. And there's no other, anything that I've missed? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Oh, you know, did we do a roll call?
We'll do a roll call.
Oh, good. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items 3A through H. May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Are there any items anyone would like to pull out and discuss specifically?
Yeah, D, please, on the approved appointment of John Tracy. What I need to know is, on approving this, what is the monetary outcome to haring this person? What is the total amount? Do you have that?
Hi, Darlene.
Thank you.
This is a position that Borough Council approved filling as Assistant Borough Treasurer back quite a few months ago, when our former Assistant Borough Treasurer left in July. So John Tracy did accept the position and started in January. He was hired in the range that was approved at that time. I can't tell you the exact number off the top of my head. But it was, council approved the range for the position, and he was hired within that range.
Well, I can remember the range, and then it was also brought out that there were, you know, there was insurance, et cetera. So that wasn't tied to the salary. And that's why I'm saying, I just needed to have a
I can get you those.
Can you get that for me?
I can get that information, but he was hired within the range that was approved by council.
I know that, and I know we discussed it thoroughly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes, those in favor of adding the consent agenda? Any opposed? All right. Motion carries, takes us to Item 4, Main Street, Hanover. Justine, welcome back.
Hi, thank you, good evening. I know Community Media has a presentation for us. Oh, and I'm realizing my annual reports are in the car, so I will bring those after I'm done with my presentation here. I'll go grab some and bring those down to you.
Somebody get them for you?
No, that's okay. I'm Justine Truxis, I'm the Executive Director of Main Street, Hanover, and I am here to give you an overview of our activities for the last year. Our annual report that I'll bring to you is for our fiscal year, which runs July to June. But because of the way that you all operate, I'm giving you an overview of 2022 specifically. So I don't know if, Mark, if you want to advance to the next slide, that'd be great. Any questions? If you could just hold those to the end, and I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. Main Street, Hanover, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we operate and own this nonprofit in our downtown to support the downtown. Our mission is to improve the economic capacity of the downtown, increase synergy, and enhance the quality of place. That's what we feel we do the best in. So we do that through a variety of activities, and those are the activities that I'm going to tell you about a little bit more tonight, so we can go next. I see that our activities can really be broken down into four different categories. Our strategic initiatives, our outreach and support, which includes a lot of business interaction, our signature events, and then our advocacy. Next, please. Some of the strategic initiatives that I want to highlight here for you tonight are our beautification program. We oversee the implementation of the hanging baskets throughout the downtown. We fundraise for that effort throughout the year. We work closely with the Hanover Garden Club, and we appreciate their support. And also, we really appreciate the support of the Public Works Department for hanging, physically hanging those baskets for us, and then helping us to maintain them. And then we manage the budget and oversee that project from start to finish. The Hometown Heroes Program, which we're so thrilled, I drove through town, I was in Chambersburg earlier today, and saw that some of the banners are up. This will be our third round of banners, and we have 49 individuals that are being honored. Well, and I have to amend that. One banner you'll recognize as you drive around is honoring eight individuals, the Bennett Brothers. So we're a little bit over 50 people that we honor every year. But this is a really incredible way that we can honor our military communities here in Hanover. We have a number of military families that either are active duty or retired, and they reside in Hanover, and we are happy to honor them through this program. And lastly, tourism. We see a lot of the work that we do in partnership with the borough, in partnership with a lot of organizations, is to promote tourism here in the Hanover region, and for us specifically, the geography we cover of the borough of Hanover and downtown. So the photo up there is from a series of videos that we created in partnership with the borough, the Have It Made in Hanover series. We're excited to be moving forward with a few commercials that are being targeted throughout the Pennsylvania and Maryland region to promote tourism in the Hanover area. And those two tourism segments that we really focus on are foodies eating out, dining out. We have a lot of really unique restaurants and breweries here in this community, a real niche market that we can fill. And we also are targeting outdoor recreation, something that I can talk a little bit about here in a moment. Next slide, please, Mark. Our big feature in what we were so proud to accomplish last year was the launch of our Heart of Hanover Trails Program. This is the new Civil War Trails Program that we, as a Main Street community, are putting forth for individuals to learn more about Hanover's participation in the Civil War and how it led up to the Battle of Gettysburg. Hanover was the battle the day before, everyone made their way into Gettysburg, and it's a really important part of the Civil War history and the history of this region. So we are honored to be a part of this program in connection with Civil War Trails, the National Civil War Organization. And we're really just thrilled to see where this can take us into 2023 as we promote this trail as an asset to our tourism, and we continue to find ways to promote it. We have an opportunity in February to be featured in Civil War Magazine on their live broadcast that they do every first Monday. So in 2023, that's really what we're going to look at as far as tourism, is ways that we can continue to promote this incredible walking tour that we've created with local historians as a huge asset to the community. Next. Our outreach and support, some of the things that I really want to highlight here tonight is our Bloom Grant. This was an exciting first round of partnership with the Business Empowerment Center through the York County Economic Alliance. With partnership and funding from their funders, we were able to award $18,000 in small business grants to businesses in our downtown footprint, if you will, the downtown district within the borough. So this was grants ranging from new signage for folks, purchasing of equipments, upgrades to their businesses and its aesthetics, new paint, new carpeting. It really was a very tangible project that these businesses needed that extra grant support and able to accomplish and continue to make their business successful. So we were really thrilled, it was 12 businesses that were awarded a total of $18,000, and that's an investment in the community in these businesses that make up our downtown. Another project that we're incredibly proud of, that we organize and oversee, is a facade grant program funded through the Department of Community and Economic Development. And to date, as we close out the program here in June, we will have seen $115,000 of total facade renovations that was leveraged from a $50,000 investment in this program from DCED. So what the facade grant program is, is a matching grant in which individuals, businesses, or property owners can receive a matching grant for facade improvements that they make. A max of $5,000 can be awarded per property, $10,000 for corner properties. So this is, again, something that Main Street, Hanover oversees and runs that invests directly into the community. This is $115,000 of improvements that business owners have made, and they've been able to do more with the money they've already set aside for these improvements because of a matching facade grant, which is incredibly exciting for us. And then the last thing I just will point out is, we continue to connect with the businesses in the downtown on a monthly basis. We connect with them and talk about different upcoming events, topics that are important to them, any new grant opportunities coming out. We talk about what's going on in their business, any kind of news that we should be hearing of. And it's really a nice touch point that we can make with these businesses monthly. We also have a private Facebook group for any business that's located in the downtown, where we can continue to communicate between meetings, if you will. Next slide, if you would, Mark. Two things just to point out, we are now launching a ribbon-cutting program. We're really excited to have held two of those in 2022. For businesses that I think it's worth pointing out, were existing outside of the downtown Hanover area and decided to locate in downtown Hanover, relocate their business, decided that it was important for them to be here. They saw the opportunity here in this downtown. So Reading Medical and Bear Skincare and Med Spa both celebrated opening of their downtown business this past year. Next slide, please. Signature Events is something that I do believe we're most known for, even though it makes up only a fraction of what we do. It is the most outward-facing thing that people maybe will see most often. So just to highlight a few of the events that we did over 2022 year. Our Second Saturday Program, where we encourage collaboration amongst the businesses to offer promotions and encourage foot traffic in the downtown. Our sip and stroll activities, this past year, I think we had 16 businesses participating. And what that does is welcome 500 potential new customers into their store in the evening where we host this event, and really gives businesses an opportunity to capture new customers and clients in a way that they would not have available to them had we not done a sip and stroll event. So we're really excited to see these continue to take place. I think it was our seventh or eighth year of doing sip and strolls, and they continue to be incredibly popular events, as well as revenue generators for our nonprofit. Our Brewery Olympics was a new event this year, I have another slide on that coming up. Chalk It Up is something we were excited to bring back this year, highlighting the arts community here in our downtown, bringing free and family-friendly activities into the downtown for borough residents, kind of regional residents, and also featuring artists, which was really exciting. And Spooky Spirits is our Halloween-themed sip and stroll, so we were excited to do that again. One thing I'll mention is, last year, when I spoke to you in January, I shared that we had 14 events throughout the 2021 year, which had roughly 4,800 people attending, as we could tell. Some of those numbers we can measure through ticketed events, others we have to really kind of guesstimate. And in 2022, we had eight signature events that we held, so almost half of those events, and we still had over 5,000 people, we can estimate, coming. So we have found that the trajectory of the events that we hold is continuing to increase because people are looking for things to be doing, and our businesses are continuing to find value in them. Next slide. Brewery Olympics was an exciting event. This, last year, was the second year of this activity, and we were able to really kind of amp up what this event means to the community. So we wanted to kind of take a moment to just speak a little bit more about it. Explore York invested in this event for the first time, meaning that they were able to cover the costs of brewing the beer, hosting the event itself, and then also created a lot of media buzz around the breweries that are located in our borough, and give them a lot of that kind of buzz and excitement and advertising through doing a really interesting and unique event that brought people into the community. Bringing people in, creating foot traffic on the streets is something that always is a really good thing for our events. And the winner, it's a competition-type event, and so teams will compete in a variety of activities. The winning team wins the opportunity to brew a new beer. And this was, this is incredibly exciting to watch, because people who participate in the activity love craft beer. So I joke about the one photo on the left, they look lovingly at the beer they're brewing. It really is such an experience for the folks who win, because they're making this beer start to finish with the professionals. And the beer gets to be launched, and we have big parties about it. But it garnered a lot of media attention, regionally, ABC 27 and Fox 43 both featured this event. Explore York, as the sponsor of the event, was able to really highlight it in their social media. And we also had created some Have It Made Here videos, highlighting and featuring, again, this niche market that we have, which is microbreweries, which is a huge draw for tourism. So it was a great way to acknowledge that here with this activity. Next, please, Mark. Advocacy, so this is maybe the last bucket that I'll talk about a little bit. Over the past year, we've been involved in a number of ways in which we can represent this downtown core regionally and nationally. So not only were we involved in some local projects, like the Eisenhower Extension Project and advocacy for that, we also led some familiarization tours. Senator Phillips Hill took a nice walking tour with us and was able to meet a number of you. We engaged with the Trail Town, the York County Trail Towns Program, representing the Hanover area in those recreational and outdoor trails activities. And then we also partner with a number of organizations, like the Cultural Alliance of York County, Pennsylvania Downtown Center. of York County, Pennsylvania Downtown Center, the York County Economic Alliance, and the Department of Community and Economic Development, all again, telling that story of downtown Hanover and what the borough has to offer and why others should be investing in this community. So we really are honored to do that, and it was something that we are continually proud of, to be able to represent this community in these organizations and be able to continue to tell what it is that we do here in this community. Next slide. And the one feature that I probably will never stop talking about was a big honor to win a townie award. Pennsylvania Downtown Center honors a number of individuals and Main Street programs at their annual gala event, if you will. The awards are called townies. And this past year, in June, we were awarded the Anchor Building for Excellence in Anchor Building to Jordan Ellis and McAllister Redevelopment Project, and then Andrea Goodson for Volunteer of the Year. So, this is incredibly exciting to be able to compete, if you will, with different projects and individuals that we like to honor across the Commonwealth. And we were chosen for excellence in these two areas of activities in which we were a part of. So, that's my little spotlight and a couple of local awards. That's my presentation for this evening. I share this with you all to kind of, again, give you a summary. I know that on the agenda here later, you'll be approving, hopefully, the ordinance to continually fund our organization, to continue funding for this coming year. But I also would welcome you that if these activities really speak to you, if you are looking to get involved, or if you have questions or other ideas in which you'd like to pursue, or things that you have seen in other communities and want to bring to Main Street Hanover, I'd welcome you to reach out. I really enjoy hearing more about what other communities do and how we can continue to improve our downtown core. Any questions, comments, before I wrap up?
I was just curious, where are we with Bank Lane?
That's a very good question. It's not a good question, I just have not had a chance to be able to move that forward, I'll be honest. For those who may not be familiar, the Wareheim Foundation provided a grant to Main Street Hanover to make some final improvements to Bank Lane. And a couple of the projects that are still outstanding in regards to that grant funding are the installation of some overhead lights to extend fully to the alley, also the striping on the streets to create kind of a demarcation of areas, one for outdoor dining and then one for cars. And then we also have some bollard installations that need to happen. My goal is for this summer to finally get that project finalized, but it has been slow going, so I'll be honest. It's not something that has been the easiest to do. Things have shifted as we've continued to move through the project from when we presented you with that idea, that late 2021, till now, it just hasn't been able to move forward. So, we still are committed to doing that, we're still thankful for the Wareheim Foundation for believing in that project, and it still is on our to-do list, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Were you having, running into any problems with the people that had the PNC Bank building?
We were not, we were not. The last really big interaction we had with them was their approval to hang the lights as far as we had in Bank Lane, but no, we had not run into any issues in moving that forward.
Yeah.
All right, Justine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations on another great year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Item 4B would be Director Grimm.
Evening. I'm here to give an update on the Traffic Congestion and Pedestrian Safety Project for the Square Downtown. It was kind of fitting that Justine preceded me. She was part of this planning, as well as many council members who were there at that time. It's been long talked about and debated throughout town, but this really took traction with the formation of the old Original Economic Development Committee and the Downtown Committee. So, I know Dr. Up spent a lot of late nights there, Councilor Hegberg, when he was Citizen Hegberg, still spent a lot of late evenings there, kind of piecing these things together as some of our other projects were going at the same time, the adaptive traffic signals and the downtown street scape improvement. So, while we tried to move forward, there were many things blocking our path, as usual, especially when we have to deal with PennDOT. But it helped us with these other active programs going on. Anytime we had a PennDOT engineer in town, I made sure they saw the square and how it worked, what our challenges were there. Two big things that council did to help move this project forward that were very helpful from those meetings, they decided to stay with the current design of the square, and then more recently, council approved a study through Traffic Resources Group out of York to do a study for us of the conditions of the square for traffic congestion and pedestrians. This was a big help for us in applying for an Arlie Grant. So the Arlie Grant is presented by the state, and it is money from the Automated Red Light Enforcement System in Philadelphia. Those monies then can be distributed for projects throughout the state, so not just Philadelphia. So my update here is that our project has been approved for a grant. This was just announced two weeks ago, and I'll read that announcement to you. Hanover Borough, $487,287 for downtown Route 94, 116, 194, traffic congestion and pedestrian safety improvements, to include modernizing the intersections, to include APS pedestrian signals, three-second advanced pedestrian phasing, flashing yellow arrow signals, 12-inch signals, and high-visibility crosswalks at both intersections, a new controller cabinet assembly, and single mast arm poles at center square intersection to accommodate flashing yellow arrow signals. Out of that $487,287, the borough, at this point, it looks like we're in for about $54,000, a little over that. There may be some other survey costs, so as we work through this, the borough right now would pay for the engineering and design and a few other ancillary items, which, as I said, comes out to about $54,000. As we work through this project, TRG will come along and present, and you'll have a layout of what the project actually includes with some visuals that you can see. But basically, as we've talked about, it is to eliminate the ancillary crosswalks before you get to center square and those traffic signals. So everyone will cross in the center, and the entire thing won't shut down when one person wants to cross the street. It will be like a typical intersection where the traffic and pedestrians can travel simultaneously parallel with each other. This is a big thing, and it was a big part on council to make those two decisions, to invest in the study. The study was just over $9,000, that study just netted us almost half a million dollars. So it was a great thing, and we're very happy to have this. We were the only recipient in York County and one of the largest recipients of this grant through the state. So I think-
This eliminates the duplicate signals, just so everybody's clear on that.
Correct.
I have a question. Is there a timeline, AJ?
That's what I was going to ask.
So, we'll work through that as we get through the design phase. So, of course, the permitting phase, when you go through PennDOT, can stretch things out, but we can at least see the light at the end of the tunnel now.
So my question is related to the traffic signal arms and poles. And of course, tonight, we're going to be discussing the planned street scape. And of course, you'll have the lighting and all the aesthetics associated with that.
Yes.
I guess, depending on timing, is there an issue, or would there be an issue, if those poles got changed out to match the aesthetics associated with?
We have included decorative poles.
Okay.
So as we said, because these projects were kind of working together, we tried to put as much of that in there as possible, as we could, so we had that flexibility.
Okay.
So along with moving to larger signal heads, decorative poles for those mast arms will be included.
So the arms, as they exist today, are going to be replaced as well as the signal heads?
Correct.
Well, I would assume the pole itself, yeah.
Yes, right.
The whole thing will be replaced to an architectural-
So we could, I believe to Councilor Hegberg's point, we can paint them whatever color we choose?
Well, if you are designing them to come in, you would get them powder coated through that specific color, mostly black to match what's there now, vice versa.
I was concerned of, you know-
Yes, exactly.
We sort of going past each other on this and not-
Yes, we've been very cognizant of that. So like I mentioned, Justine, with Eric Maynes, our engineer, with all of these kind of big projects that we've had together, we've mentioned the Trail Towns, the DCNR, green space plan right now, comprehensive plans, parks and green space comprehensive plan. We've tried to be cognizant, to keep all these things intertwined and keep everybody on the same page and moving together. It's a great thing to get free money, but it's a lot better if you can coordinate and get everybody together and not duplicate efforts.
I think sometimes we do question whether or not we have to do studies for a variety of things. I think this certainly proves that sometimes studies bring money. So it's great. Thank you, AJ.
Sure. Thank you.
Just getting rid of half the stoplights or something, right?
That's awesome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grimm. Okay, next, Finance, Personnel, and Administration, Item A. Fire tax liens and exonerations. How do we go about that? Do we need a vote on that? To ratify the mayor's action to exonerate the tax collector from further collection of delinquent taxes that will be referred to the York County Tax Colhean Bureau for a lien. May I have a motion?
So motion.
You got to go. Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I'll have a little more explanation.
No, go right ahead. Put my glasses back on.
I guess this is an annual process that's done-
Correct.
-to really consolidate the collection efforts for the benefit of the borough, the school, and the county, away from the tax collector, a more effective approach with the liens that the York County Tax Bureau will perform to collect these taxes, and it's resulted overall, our collection rate is in the high 90%, 95, 96% rate. So it is a valuable exercise, and it's successful. So that's just a background, if anybody had any questions about what the process is for. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. With that-
With the motion?
Motion?
Yep.
Second, Brian?
Yep.
Any discussion? Do we need a roll call, load on that, or not?
No.
All right. Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Motion carries. 5B, the ordinances for the 2023 appropriations, Main Street Hanover, Justine, $40,000, and the Hanover Economic Development Corporation, $15,000.
Must approve.
Motion, second. Any comments, discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item C. You missed out, we just approved your money.
Oh, thank you.
5C, the library fundraising and development contractor approve the RFP.
At this time, I'm asking council to approve us to go out and start collecting RFPs from contractors who are interested in fulfilling the library fundraising and development role at the library. Previously, I came to council and requested a hire, which council tabled that motion in order to get the ball rolling on those efforts. I think our next action is to hire a contractor who would do it for a set period of time, for a set amount. That amount, obviously, I don't have yet because that'll be based on the results of the RFP. So at this time, I'm just requesting to get the RFPs. When those RFPs are reviewed, council will have the opportunity to review and approve the contract at that time.
Okay, we have a motion?
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further questions, Remy? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Item D, 333 Realty LLC versus, you want to talk about this, please?
Sure. The next agenda item involves litigation, 333 Realty versus the Borough of Hanover and Tom and Rhonda Allison. What this is, is a quiet title action filed by 333 to quiet title to an unopened alleyway 10 feet wide and about 80 feet long, which is behind the New Tree of Life building. The adjoining property owners, that is, the property on the other side of the alleyway are the borough and Tom and Rhonda Allison. The borough's interest in this matter, since it's not an opened alley, or an alley that borough has ever maintained or ever used, is only to preserve the right of access to 229 Carlisle Street by way of the alley. So provided that we get that access to 229, the borough does not have a substantial interest in defending or contesting the quiet title action. So what you have before you tonight is to, number one, approve the proposed settlement agreement, and then, second, to approve the substance of the proposed access easement agreement, which is perpetual.
Any questions further for Attorney Schultz? A motion in favor?
Motion, Scott.
Thank you. Second?
Scott seconded it.
Second, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Does that require a roll call? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next is Governance and Policy. Item A, the public comment, three-minute time limitation.
Thank you. Can you give you a little background information on that?
Yes.
At our Governance and Policy Committee, we discussed Resolution 1296, which deals with decorum at public meetings, and deals with a variety of things, including the three-minute time limitation, which is in our current Resolution 1296. We thought it would be helpful, we do not, our point is not to cut off any public comment, our point is to limit it to concise, precise statements, so we can conduct our business meeting. So we're asking for approval for purchase and implementation of a timing system, and I don't recall the cost on that. Do you recall the cost, Margie?
It was less than $200, I think, about $170.
Yeah, $169, something like that, I think.
How much is it, Margie?
$170, I think.
$170 some?
Yes.
Where's that being purchased from?
I don't, there's several agencies that have them available for sale, we just found one and got an example to share, so we haven't decided-
Yeah, I know, we were talking about it, it was introduced to governess, you know, so I didn't know that that was-
I had a picture, remember?
Yeah.
It'll be nice to be able to help those that are speaking to see that, and then they can, you know, bring their discussion to a conclusion a little bit more easily. And the chair, as Scott had said, has the opportunity to give that person a little more time, if they need more time to finish up.
So that's a time down, but you can, how much time is allowed on that?
Whatever you want to set it.
Whatever you want? You just program it, so if you were giving somebody five or 10 minutes or whatever, you could do so. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be- Up to the chair. Up to the chair. Thank you, Tim.
So it's clearly up to the chair to give them more time?
Yes.
If necessary.
So it probably starts at three minutes, counts down to zero, and then starts counting in negative minutes, so you know how long I've seen them-
But the chair has the option.
Is that the way it goes, Tim?
Yeah. But you can set it whatever you want it to be. If you want it to be five minutes, you can make it five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So moved.
Now wait a minute here, I have some questions. We're talking a three-minute time limitation. I attended, and I'm part of the governess committee, and I do have a problem with the limitation. I think that we've done very well so far because every one of these individuals have been able to come up and use the time that they wanted. And there are many times that they go back to sit down, and somebody will come forward and they'll bring up another subject regarding that matter, and all of a sudden, it occurs to them that there was something more they wanted to add. Would they be allowed to get up again and speak, or is that limitation going to be? And it depends on who the head of that particular committee or organization is, that will, I mean, of our council, that would allow them to speak in regards to the time period. I just felt three minutes is not an, I mean, if we're going to argue on limitation, I personally am not in favor of any limitation in regards to anybody- in regards to anybody that comes forward here to speak.
Then you'd have to change your organs.
But if they repeat, if they constantly are repeating something over and over again, I feel that it would be up to the head of council or whoever's in charge to say, "We have run through that gauntlet, and now you will be timed three minutes." I want that... I want that laxativity to be able to give our people time to present their opinions and what they're coming forth in. So, I don't necessarily want to put a three-minute limitation in there, except to say that we do have the availability of a machine that will... You know, if we feel that we have 40 people out here, and we might be here... I don't care how long we're here. Okay? I don't care. But some have other plans and other responsibilities. So, you hold a meeting at a reasonable time, and it's done timely. But I just feel that we shouldn't be putting that on our people at this time. I want to hear what they have to say. Three minutes, to me, is not long enough. If you were going to argue the point with me, I would have said, "Well, you know what? If you actually threw me up against a wall and said, 'You have to give me an idea of the time which we spoke about in governance,' I prefer the five minutes." But before that, putting number one in front, I do not believe in time limits for the people. But if it is repetitive, then it is up to the head of council or whoever's holding that particular meeting, you know, to say, you know, "Now, we're going to begin." And it's up to them, really, to decide, you know, if we have excess that we shouldn't have. But I just feel if we limit it to three minutes, we are really setting ourselves up for slow agony of death.
Your concerns are stated in the resolution. That does say the chair can extend it more times, and the person may get up again to speak about a different topic.
I would like it worded different. Right. I don't want to see this three-minute time limitation.
Then we'll have to go back and change your ordinance or change your resolution.
She's saying you're going to have to change their ordinance.
Darlene, remember, this is an existing ordinance that we're...
It is an existing resolution.
It's just sort of bringing...
But we never pushed it. We never pushed it. That was what we did here at council. You never push people into a three-minute...
Well, there were times when people were asked to make their comments a little more concise.
Well, you know, I just think, can we word it different? Because this is what I was trying to say when we had our meeting. I want the people, they come first, and we're here to hear them. And I don't want to use a definite limitation, but I do want it brought into play. And maybe this is the part that we should be doing. When we find something that's offending, I don't know how everybody out there feels, but to me, I'm not afraid to listen to them. And I know you're not. You're not.
I don't think anybody in this council is.
The rest of us, we're not afraid to listen to the people. But I want to be fair, and this is what it's all about.
I think Scott did a great job tonight.
Can we take this back to governance? Table it? And come up with better wording?
This is for the purchase of a piece of equipment. You can take the ordinance back and change it to governance if you want, but right now, our ordinance is three minutes. You're free to take it back to change it and bring it back to us, but this is just to order a piece of equipment. This isn't to change it.
Right. We've never had it before. And so, I'm saying this is going to be a whole new...
It's just a piece of equipment that can be changed to three minutes, five minutes, 20 minutes, 60 minutes, whatever you desire.
Motion on the floor.
Well, the only thing I want is the removal of that three minute.
Darlene, second?
It was second, yes.
What, second?
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right. So noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the second item under Governance and Policy. Some time ago, we talked about having some junior council candidates, and we were very fortunate to find two lovely young women who are interested in being on our council as junior council candidates. We have Libby Houston, and we have Thea Persaud. Did I say that correctly? Persaud. And we have your places here. If we want to... Information was in your packet about these young ladies and explained why they wanted to be on the council, and I think they have very good reasons as to why they want to be a member. And Margie and I met with them and told them we certainly want them to be an active member. They can participate in executive council, but they can participate in our workshop meetings and in our regular meetings. And they're the future of our community, so hopefully, they will give us some comments from time to time when things touch upon them. So, I'm asking you to approve Libby and Thea as junior council candidates.
I so motion on that, Barb.
Okay.
And where are they? Right there.
You can't see them.
I can't see them. Behind the hole. I can't see them, so...
Okay.
They're going to move in a minute.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
And they're going to take their seats?
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats.
Do I need to swear them in?
You can do it in less than three minutes.
You know, you couldn't do a police officer in three.
That's right.
We'll get a picture later, maybe, for our newsletter.
Yeah.
That'd be great. That concludes my report.
They're not voting numbers.
Well, I counsel.
Dr. Rupp, you finished?
I'm done.
All right. Next is Public Works and Facilities. Mr. Kress?
Happy to have you, Mr. Mainz.
Good evening. So, on the agenda tonight is the continuation of a discussion that we have been at since I started here, so three years ago now, when we started the conversation about our facilities and unfortunately, some of the lack of investment we've made in those facilities and certainly understanding that we are in a newer world that has different demands on us for all of our departments, whether it's public administration, public safety, public works, water resources, and all of those things. So, your Public Works and Facilities Committee has been busy working on that. They've been working through program studies, space analysis, feasibility studies, site assessment forums, all of these sorts of things. And we are to the point now where we need to take the next step, which is to begin to actually do our site planning. And so, while we've really been focused on the buildings to date, now we need to shift gears a little bit and start looking at where those buildings might land and looking at how those sites might accommodate those and the challenges that might come along with that. That's important for us because as we're trying to build a solid understanding of what costs are involved with projects like this, you need to have the site planning piece in order to understand that. And so, what I have done is I have gone out and talked to several engineering and surveying firms. I have gotten scopes and proposals from all of them. I have reviewed them with the architect, and I've dissected and tucked them up and gotten you what I feel to be the most cost-effective for site planning for both sites. I took that to the Public Works and Facilities Committee meeting, the last one that they had, and it was their recommendation that we would move forward with the site planning and with the proposals that I had procured.
I have a question. On that proposal for the civil site planning, I looked over, and it was quite interesting.
Very detailed.
I enjoyed it. Yes. Some of the print was very tiny.
Yes. That's the consultants.
I'm not getting any younger, but anyhow.
You do the conditions. Nothing. It's the legal stuff goes in small print.
Yeah, you're right, Chuck. Yeah. But the money that we're spending, it's like $120,000 for the one, 70 some for the other, okay?
Yes.
Is that coming out of our money at present and not being taken out of that 5.5 million that was given over to us as a grant? Does any of that go toward that type of...
This is part of your capital, your capital spending, that money that you did tuck aside. This is part and parcel to that. But when we sat down and we talked about your budget for this year, we really came to the conclusion, we're not ready to take on construction costs. We're nowhere near that at this point. And so, really, 2023 for us is just the continuation of the efforts in, in this particular instance, site planning. We continue efforts on the architectural side, fixing up the basis of design reports and things like that. All of that money is coming out of that capital building funding that was established, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. I needed that clarified.
So moved. Second.
Any other further comments or questions? Don't need a roll call, correct?
No.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kress. Thank you, Eric.
Scott, I do have one request of Eric. It helps me to see stuff, like in reality. I was wondering if he could maybe set up a time that we go out there and view those places and sort of see where this building is going to sit in that building. It helps me sort of understand.
Yeah, absolutely.
Kind of like a site tour.
Yeah, like a little site tour.
All I would ask in that is if you can kind of all decide who wants to go and what you want to see, I want to try and lump them together as opposed to 10 different trips out to the site. But if you just let maybe Dory or myself know, you know, "Hey, I'm interested in looking at this site or that site," I'll certainly make accommodations to get you there. And I agree. I think that's very important.
We can set dates and announce it, and we can just follow up.
I'm sorry?
You can just set dates and announce it, and we can just go with what you got. How about something like that?
I can. That's a little less accommodating to you, and I certainly work for you. So, I want to work around your schedule to make sure you can be there. I'm here every day, so I'll go whenever you want to go.
We'll leave that between Mr. Kress and Mr. Mainz to figure the details out, and that will go from there.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, though.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll bring this across on the website, then?
Yeah. Before we leave this topic, just real quick, one of the other things that the Public Works and Facilities Committee hit on that we are going to be starting is we need to start to become, bringing the public into more of it now. So, certainly, before, we're doing a lot of the technical end of things, looking at space, talking to staff and things like that. Now, we need to start letting the public in to see all of that effort we've done, all of the work we've done with space management and looking at these studies and these feasibility, as well as the site planning effort as it starts to get legs and move forward. So, I'm going to start working on some materials and things that will kind of help educate the public as to that whole journey we've been on for the last three years, because I think a lot of work has been accomplished, and I don't think all that work always sees the light of day. And so, we need to see if we can fix that.
And how do you plan to go about that?
I haven't figured that out yet. I've got a number of ideas on how to do that. I think some of it certainly is sharing some of the many documents and studies we've done, making them easy to access, putting them in an organized way. I think also, you know, we may need to have something where maybe we open this building up and have some sort of an open house where we allow the public to come in, see those things, and maybe see for themselves some of the conditions and things that we're up against.
And you'll have them available on the website, too?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
That... Thank you very much.
I'm going to stay here because I'm up for 8A, too.
Okay. 8A. Enhancement Committee, I believe that's Mr. Heigler.
It is, but I'll let Eric talk about it. We've got some guests here from the team.
So, Enhancement Committee has been at work since about the middle of last year when we put out a request for proposals to finally continue the work that had been started with the 2018 Simone Collins study. So, if you're familiar with it, the 2018 Simone Collins study was when the Borough last looked at your streetscape and really was having a lot of conversations, a lot of public engagement, design charrettes, workshops, and things to understand what makes our downtown streetscape, what makes it better, what makes it engaging, what makes it people want to be there to either come and participate in things, to buy things, to eat here, or to invest their business dollars in those things. And certainly, to all the points Justine made about the work she's doing, that just goes part and parcel with this. So, what we did back in about the middle of last year was we put a request for proposals out, and we got a number of proposals. We went all over the place, and ultimately, the committee narrowed it down to two. We brought them in just before the holidays and did shortlist interviews with them, and we really ran them through the gauntlet. We had a lot of preformed questions that we asked them. And at the end of that, one of the firms came out as being what the committee felt best represented what they wanted for the Borough, best represented the sort of technical and creative resources to do what we thought the Borough wanted to do. And as part of that, what I thought was an interesting piece was they also brought along with it that important piece of, "How do you pay for this?" You know, it's great to have pretty pictures and concepts and things, but if they can't go anywhere and they can't be funded, they're not of much value to anyone. And so, what this particular team brought forward with them was somebody who could help navigate that, help you understand what, how you go about funding those things, and not only that, but bring to it a history of having done that in other communities. And that was unique to their proposal to what we saw from some of the other ones. And so, I asked them to be here tonight. So, I'm not going to give you the hour presentation, but we do have Dewberry here with us in the audience to give you just kind of an introduction of their team and certainly answer any questions you may have, and I will turn it over to them at this point.
Good evening. I'm John Holmes with Dewberry Engineers. I talked to our... He's my local guy. Lives in Spring Grove School District. Don't hold that against me, but I was a high school graduate there in Russellwood, Hanover, often, and that sort of thing. But anyway, so we're pleased to have this project. We've, in our polls, we laid out what we're going to do, study what was done in the past, have some public outreach, get some more input, come up with a general, some concept plans of how to approach it, look at funding alternatives. That's where we have Delta Development involved. They've done a fair amount of that. I've actually worked with them in the past. One project was up on Slimer Avenue in Gettysburg. So, we're familiar with these types of projects. One of the key features that we talked about was green stormwater infrastructure to address stormwater when we're doing these streetscapes. Dewberry's done a lot of those, a lot of them in the Northeast, including some of the big cities as well as some smaller communities. So, we feel like we're uniquely suited to this. So, we have, with today's technology, we can draw some key personnel from outside the area to bring some extra expertise for us, but I'll be the local guy heading up the project. And I have Darren Asper from Delta Develop who would add to that.
Yeah. Darren Asper with Delta Development Group. I've been with Delta for 27 years. Not quite as local as John, but I'm from Boiling Springs, so that's not too far away. Excited to be down here to work on this project. Our specialty is, in addition to the planning work, really looking at the projects as they come forward and how do you fund them. We have an unprecedented opportunity at state and federal level in terms of funding, and we can give a realistic sense in terms of how you phase out projects in terms of funding to put all the pieces together in terms of a funding strategy. I was really glad to hear tonight all the success you've had with funding between your R.L.A. grant and some of the other exciting things that have happened. We'd like to help you build on that in terms of implementation of a plan that will move Hanover forward in the next 10 years. So, we're excited about that.
Any questions from us, for us?
of implementation of a plan that will move Hanover forward in the next 10 years. So, we're excited about that.
Any questions from us, for us?
I think this is huge. I think we're making some forward movement with this. And not only doing this, we also, listen, this is a downtown Hanover. We're actually moving forward with it. And not only moving forward with it, we have funding in the line, in the strategy to make it happen.
Ideas and money at the same time.
Yes, that's progress.
Brian, that's a very astute point.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm very familiar with downtown Hanover, having done the Dutch Festival for many years. When you drive into town at five o'clock in the morning and say, well, I've been doing this again this year. And it's a lot of fun getting the vendors in place, then shoot them out of town so we can reopen the street so we don't get in trouble with it.
Are you one of the vendors?
No, I was with the Chamber.
Ah, God.
I was one of the volunteers.
It's a long day.
It is a long day.
Okay. Any questions about this? Chuck, you want to add anything more to that?
No, I'm looking forward to get it going. We got stalled a little bit with the holidays, but...
So you're looking for, you're making a motion?
Emotion to move it, yep.
Your motion?
I motion it.
I'll second.
Brian's a second. Any discussion further? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Chris. Motion carries.
Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Excited to have you.
Thank you very much.
So I'll take B here.
Item B?
Yeah. So, citizen advisories to the Enhancement Committee, as many of you know, with all our different committees, we're trying to make some changes here. This would be the first committee with citizen advisors. We'll have three, similar to Barb and the young ladies joining us on the council. We're sort of trying to reach out a little bit more here. So with that, the Enhancement Committee would like to approve the appointment of Brian Johnson. He's also on the Planning Commission. Austin Graham is on the Planning Commission and Isaac Reston, who's here this evening.
Second. I'll second your motion.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Chris. All right, motion carries.
Can we go, Isaac?
Thank you. Gentlemen, you want to stand?
Looking forward to working with you. All right.
We'll work him.
Okay. Okay, number nine, public safety. What it belong to? Chris?
Public safety. At our last meeting, we discussed, we came up with a draft of a contractor log form that basically, the gist of it is, any contractors that we have working on our facilities, particularly off-hours or facilities like, you know, waterworks or sewer plant, that type of thing, that they have a special form they fill out. So we don't just have, you know, anybody can come up and say that they're a contractor and get in and possibly for nefarious reasons do something that they shouldn't do. So anyhow, we came up with a form that nails that down so that we don't have issues. And the other thing we discussed was that proposed changes to special events ordinances, which had pretty much dealt with the Brew Fest. The Brew Fest, they want to make that an priority. Yeah, Snack Town Brew Fest, they want to make that an annual priority, special event. So, that's really all the Safety Committee discussed.
Okay, so then, item 9A, the amendment of the special event ordinance. Chris, you make a motion in favor of that and...
Yeah, I'll sue motion.
Second?
Yep.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Item 9B, regal rental, excuse me, registration and inspection workshop. Approve the formation of a workshop between council members and citizens. Have a motion to approve that?
I say motion.
All right, and a second?
Is there a need for it? Mr. Becker even said.
What?
Mr. Becker's questioning the need for it. Do we even need it?
Yeah, I was, I was very...
You believe we need it?
No, I asked them if they needed it.
I understand, but now he's saying we don't.
Yeah, apparently.
Well, so we have a motion and it needs a second.
Well, it's not going to get a second.
I think I've been here before.
What?
All right. No second? All right.
It's fine.
What are you saying about? Motion fails for lack of a second.
How about a motion to move the original intent forward? Original ordinance forward? Can we add that?
It's not, well, it's not on the agenda.
That's, yeah, it has to be.
Then I'll save it.
Next time.
You can add to the next meeting agenda, can I?
What?
I mean, there's no need for the workshop.
No. No, we've eliminated the workshop.
No, I'm just saying Chuck's suggestion, you can add to the next agenda, am I correct?
One public comment.
I'm just asking, because you've indicated something that's not exactly correct, I would like to follow up on that.
Well, you did too in saying that our meetings are not open to the public and they are.
And that's the problem. That was not the intent. What Mr. Redding and I proposed was a workshop that was open to the public. What you're doing is a...
We move on to the next.
Right, let's, let's just, let's stay on this. So that, that's dead for now.
Do we have a...
Lack of a second.
No, no, no. Do we have a, an idea going here where we wanted the workshop, but the workshop was done by the people? Now, let me finish, Scott. And it was, it was done by the people because they, they were not in favor of the IPMC and the things that went with it. And what the workshop was done, it was open to the public. It was open to the public. We cannot always have, let me put it this way. There was a demand for a code enforcement officer to be present. That code enforcement officer works his tail off, day in and day out, and he cannot be at the meetings. The idea was to find out from you, renters and landlords, about the problems that you were facing. One was registration and fees. We were going to address it to its ultimate, both tenants, private ownership, people who own their own homes, and for the landlords. This is where I was with it. I ask you what you wanted, okay? You want to defeat it, you want to come back out with something different, that's fine. I just wanted you to know that you had the chance to be heard. This was not a lockdown. This was never a lockdown workshop. But we could go back to the code enforcer. And any questions that we had from a particular meeting, we could introduce and place with him and he would give us the information we needed to bring to our next meeting.
Okay, so what, what has to happen now?
I, I don't know, Scott. I mean, I'm absolutely astounded.
Right, but it's, it dies for lack of a second. Procedurally, then, if this wants to be dealt with yet again, it can go back to, where does it belong in public safety, pardon me. And the next public safety meeting is...
February 7.
February 7. So, those that would like to participate in an enhanced version of this discussion can be at the public safety meeting on February 7 and will expound upon this.
Would you like that?
Put a plan behind it and whatever you want to do.
And that way it's with the committee.
All right.
That is correct. It has to be brought forward.
I think what Ms. Funk is trying to say, guys, is there wasn't an outline for this, 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 what we were going to do. It was for everyone's...
We're going to take this back to the public safety meeting, correct, Scott?
Correct. And it's February 7 is the next one.
Yeah, I've got it.
At 6:00 PM in this room. Okay, so if I could go forward, then, item 10, the committee chair reports.
Scott, hold on a second. I just want to say something as the chair of public safety. What we want to do is, we want to have all the players at that meeting so we can hash out what we're going to do, you know, including the renters, the landlords. And, you know, basically, that's, that pretty well is the two main players. And, you know, like, we'll get, we'll get our staff involved when we come away from that meeting with, with some direction that we're going to go in. So, I definitely want, you know, people on both sides of the issue and we can hash it out at that point. So, that's, probably we can do it all in one meeting, hopefully.
All right.
Thank you.
So that falls under Mr. Lockard's Public Safety Committee. So, Mr. Lockard already gave his committee chair report. Chuck, do you have anything to add? Mr. Heigert for enhancement?
No, we just, we did it.
Okay. Water and sewer. Tim or Chuck, can you cover for Bill there?
I haven't had any to add in a meeting. No, no business.
Okay. Mr. Kress, Public Works and Facilities?
Yeah, I got one thing. If I could, I'd like to have everybody's attention. Okay? As Mr. Mainz sends out information about where we are with either a new facility or what we're working on, please, now is the time to stress any of your concerns, questions or issues that you might have. Okay? He's going to put some information out to you fairly soon and now would be the time. I believe he did a good job of talking with Councilman Rupp, Dr. Rupp, and I think he answered a lot of her questions and we want to continue that path. So, as you see this stuff, don't just double-click that email. Please take a couple of minutes and read it.
Okay, so now's the time to make any of your, everybody's concerns on the council and/or comments known to Mr. Kress or Mr. Mainz.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Rupp, Governance and Policy?
I would just thank Councilman Kress for his comment because his plans were worked on for like three years and it's been a long series of meetings with this plan. So I agree, take a look at it because it's some, it's been a long time coming. Governance and Policy Committee, I think we continue to look at our policies and our resolutions and I'm sure with Margie as our new borough manager, maybe some things she wants to bring to our attention. So we'll just keep plugging away. That'll be it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lockard, would you like to comment on the Fire Commission?
Okay, yeah. At this point, things are moving along fairly smooth. We have hired, hired a lady to replace our one administrative assistant, Vanessa Harrison, who resigned from her position in, back in December. And I have a meeting tomorrow night out, I believe it's at Penn Township this month. So, that's at 5:30 tomorrow evening. That's really all I have on the commission.
Thank you very much. Management reports. Margie, do we have anything you want to put in there?
No, I don't believe there is.
As a placeholder, we're good?
Nope.
Any correspondence and information?
There is some correspondence.
Yeah. How do we want to handle this?
Can I just ask if anyone had any comments on correspondence and information?
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments on the correspondence in the package or any other that they're aware of? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Additional public comment? We'll start with those in the room if anyone else would like to add something to the, based on the comments of this meeting.
Appreciate you guys taking the time to hold the meeting and of course to allow us to come here. I do just want to take a quick moment to say that...
Can you, would you, your name and...
Of course. Our parks, Dart Drive. Nothing personal, I don't like fully doxing myself, but I normally don't come out to these meetings. I feel over half of the room came out for a very specific reason this evening and the fact that only one person on the council deigned to even think about it kind of shows us where you sit and where we lie as far as our workshop and where we, we as a people sit with that. So I just want to go ahead and urge you guys to think about that for the future. And on February 7, it's not the 6th, is the meeting that I'm sure we'll all be attending. I'm going forward with that.
Yeah, it was the 6th, or excuse me, the 7th.
The 7th, yeah, it was previously stated as the 6th. Yep, I just wanted to make sure that we have that proper.
Yes, the 7th at 6:00.
Seven and six, yeah.
And it's held in this room.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that, one, that was also amended because it was originally stated as the 6th at 6:00 and I did not want anyone to miss that meeting. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the room? Anyone online?
I want to, last thing.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You might recall that we had a large group of people here several times over the last few months. They cannot show up at every single meeting. We cannot keep that group together to come meeting after meeting, month after month. So you can't expect them to be here. But we will remind them that there is a meeting in February and we will be present and ready to participate again as a group. So, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone online would like to comment? Would you, gentlemen, take care of that, please?
If you're joining us online, you're able to unmute yourself if we'd like to address council.
I guess that, take that as a no. Okay, well, that brings, any further comment?
I've got a question from some of the people in my ward on concerns with a traffic study at the, at the intersection of Middle Mountain Ridge. If anybody has any information on that, do we have one that had happened down there?
We actually did do one there.
Okay. They're asking about it and I just wanted to...
Against the chief.
Address it here today.
Oh, no, he's back there. I can't see him either because didn't we do one way back, like about three years ago?
Yeah. I don't have with you.
That's fine.
The determination was there was no need for...
Okay.
I do remember that, for any type of a light or anything different than what's there.
That's what they wanted to hear and I told them I would address it here today. So...
Okay. Any other counselor comments with that?
I do have a question, just as a reminder, placeholder, that in our financial document we removed the borough's goals and objectives for 2023. And we're going to be into February already, so I think we need to figure out what that is going forward.
Okay, very good point. So we'll take that for the next, the next month's version of this. We'll have that discussion and agree on it. I certainly don't see any major changes, but Chuck, your point's very valid. It should be in there. Okay, brings us to item 14, adjournment. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All right, second. So we stand adjourned at 8:29.